Welcome, everyone. I will call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for October 7th, 2020. We're joined today again by veteran Don Bradley. Thank you for being here to lead us in the pledge. And our county engineer, John Kleindetz, is going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd be in an attitude of prayer with me. Lord, as our county's leaders meet and deal with issues both regular and extraordinary, from business as usual to new and life-threatening, we ask that you be with them. As the Bible says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God." We thank you for our power of governance, and we thank you for providing those willing to assume the responsibility of governance on behalf of all of us. We ask that you keep them strong and guide them to continue to make the best decisions. Give them understanding, integrity, and empathy. Give them courage. You know that the burdens and responsibilities they bear are greater than even we realize. Bless and guide and protect them as they serve the people of York County. All of these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Okay. If we can move on to item four on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the 911 Communications Center and Tyler Technologies Inc., Troy, Michigan, for maintenance and support of Tyler Software for a total cost of $447,478.72 for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the 911 Communications Center and MCM Consulting Group, State College, Pennsylvania, to provide professional consulting in regards to Act 12 funding requirements for a total cost of $22,000 for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services and Cybercon IQ, York, Pennsylvania, to provide behavioral-based security awareness training for 20 York County employees for a cost of
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Court Administration and SenoGraph Elmhurst, Illinois, to provide 19 Lumarex writers and accessories at a cost of $4,495 per device for a total cost of $85,405, with $33,070 charged to the court's budget and the balance charged to the Capital Reserve Technology Fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and the Pennsylvania State University Penn State Cooperative Extension Nutrition Links University Park, Pennsylvania, to provide nutrition links education classes at various food pantries in York County for the period of October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a report submission on behalf of the Human Services Department for the York County Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report for fiscal years 2019-2020 in the amount of $17,484,367, with prior year retained earnings expended in the amount of $635,690 and a retained earnings plan for fiscal year 2019-2020 in the amount of $875,905.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know Michelle's not here, and Mark, I know the retained earnings, we just roll that over every year.
Yes.
In the block grant program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Zachary Zimmerman to the York County Parks Advisory Board to fill a member's unexpired term effective November 17th, 2020 to December 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you're watching, Zach, congratulations and welcome to the Parks Advisory Board. Item number 12.
I make a motion to grant permission to New Freedom Borough to replace a water line that crosses underneath the Heritage Rail Trail in New Freedom Borough.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13.
Motion to approve the recommendations of HRG, York County Bridge Engineers, as included in their Sheaford Road Bridge closure and removal study.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14.
Motion to allow the Friends of Sheaford Road Bridge until October 1st, 2022 to explore three of the potential options and secure the funding necessary for disposition of the bridge that had been identified in the report. Those options include: transfer ownership to a new owner to determine future use; transfer ownership, disassemble, and store at new owner's designated location for future use; and three, transfer ownership and transfer bridge to Yellow Breaches Park, Lowry Allen Township. If the Friends of Sheaford Road Bridge are unable to accomplish one of three options outlined above, the counties will need to consider permanent closure and removal as identified in the study.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-29, LERTA abatement on the property located in the city of York owned by Rupp Building LLC at 2 West Market Street with an abatement value of $471,510 in assessment over 10 years, with the first year being 100% and the subsequent years decreasing in increments of 10%. This property will be fully taxable in the 11th year.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know we have these come forward, Mark, and I know for the public, when they talk about the abatement value of the $471, that's the improvements made to the building that they get a break on their taxes for 10 years.
Correct. They would still be taxed on the full amount of the assessed value prior to the improvements.
Right.
This is just the abatement on the improvement.
And I understand that the city and I think the school district have passed this already.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-30, LERTA abatement on the property located in the city of York owned by 850 Vogel Song Road LLC at 850 Vogel Song Road with an abatement value of $296,320 in assessment over 10 years, with the first year being 100% and the subsequent years decreasing in increments of 10%. This property will be fully taxable in the 11th year.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17.
Motion to approve tax refund register 2020-15 authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $11,108.75.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18.
Motion to approve tax refund register 2020-16 authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $59.78.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to approve check register for the week of October 7th, 2020 totaling $6,185,198.76.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 20 is a report on open positions, and we're joined today by Stephanie Deal from our Human Resources Department who will give an update on the open positions.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The following positions are open for application as of October 7th, 2020. The Commissioner's Office, Deputy Administrator; Commissioner's Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor; Facilities Management, Custodians, and Maintenance Workers. 911 Dispatch Trainees; Quality Assurance Specialist 1; Radio Administrator; Shift Supervisor and Training QA Manager; Voters Registration Elections; Process Implementation Coordinator; Human Services Department Executive Director of Human Services; Conservation District Engineer; Public Defender, Assistant Public Defender; District Attorney, Paralegal, Unit Secretary; Information Services, Enterprise Technology Engineer, IT Support Services Manager, Senior Enterprise Technology Administrator; Children, Youth, and Families, Clerk Type S 2, Program Specialist 1; Preparatory Court Clerk; Court Administration Administrative Assistant, Judicial Law Clerk; District Magistrate Offices, District Court Clerks; Divorce Master, Hearing Officer 2; Sheriff's Office, Deputy Sheriffs, Paralegal; Veterans Affairs, Veteran Service Officer; and lastly, Assessment, Tax Claim Manager. So for additional information or to apply for a position, we ask that anyone visit our website at www.yorkcountypa.gov. I'm sorry, .gov. Thank you. And you would want to look under the employment link to apply for a position. Or you may contact the Human Resources Office at 717-771-9214. We also invite anyone to follow the Human Resources Department on Facebook, and you can find us at York County PA Human Resources. We are also on Twitter, and our handle is @YorkCOHR. Thank you.
Any questions for Stephanie? Okay. We'll move on. Item number 21. There were no executive sessions between last week and this week. We'll move on to other business. Our standing item under other business is an update on CARES. Today, the Economic Alliance is joining us to give an update on the restart grant process and as well as continued work on the broadband pilot project. So whoever wants to go first, Kevin or Silas?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll go first because mine's a little bit shorter than Kevin's, and I'll keep it short and sweet. Last Friday, our bid documents for the pilot project went live. They were posted on PEN Bid, and they were advertised for the first time publicly in the newspaper on Sunday. They'll be advertised again this week for the second time. Just to remind folks that might be watching at home that are interested in bidding, it's the title of the bid package is Construction of Heritage Rail Trail Middle Mile Fiber Network Pilot Project. So if you put in any of those words on PEN Bid, it'll pop up for you. A reminder that, again, the documents went live October 2nd. The clarification, which is another word for questions on the bid packages, are due today through PEN Bid by 5:00 PM, and we have received quite a few requests for clarifications and interest from potential bidders seeking more information. So good sign that we should have multiple bidders. And then the due date for all bids is October 14th at 10:00 AM. So again, if anybody is watching at home and interested in bidding, please visit PEN Bid, and we'll keep advancing the project. We had some productive meetings last week about coordination with municipalities, potential permitting, some other issues with the project, so continue to work hard to get it done for the county.
Great. Any questions for Silas? All right. We'll see you at our next Commissioners meeting, right?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I think Kevin's going to come next. It looks like we're having some little bit of technical difficulty with the laptop, so just be patient with us here for a moment.
Silas, any other updates you'd like to share?
Well, how about if I give an elections update?
Sure.
Why don't I do that? So then we'll come back to that. So Commissioners have been updating the folks watching at our meetings, giving you guys and guys and gals an election update. So I know we did this last week, but just to do it again, so for those of you that are receiving a mail-in ballot, and yes, they are on their way, please be patient with our staff. There are over 60,000 that are en route, being printed and stuffed in all of those wonderful things to get them to you. So again, please be patient, but 60,000 are on their way. This is what you will receive in the mail, your official election ballot, and in there there'll be several pieces of information. One is an instruction sheet, a ballot, and this is a sample ballot, so this isn't the real live ballot, but a ballot that will look like this. You will get an official election ballot envelope, and you will get a mailing envelope. And the mailing envelope will have prepaid postage on it, so you do not need to purchase a stamp. The postage has already been paid for. It is very important that you put your ballot inside of the official election ballot envelope and then stick that inside the mailing envelope. There's been a lot of discussion around what's a naked ballot and that the Board of Elections is unable to count a naked ballot. What that means is if your ballot is not in this envelope, the Board of Elections will not be able to count your vote. So it is very important that your ballot go inside this envelope, which goes inside this mailing envelope. So that's kind of the procedure for mail-in ballots. To date, the Elections Department has processed over 37,000 registrations. So that could be a name change, address change, a new voter, or a party change. There's roughly 3,800 in the queue. They are processed on a daily basis. Just a reminder, the deadline for anything involving a registration change is October 19th. After October 19th, you will not be able to change a name, an address, party, or register to vote. So that date is very important. I mentioned earlier, we have roughly 64,000 ballots that are on the way out to individuals who've requested those. Again, please be patient. It does take a while to stuff and print all of those materials, but they are on their way. We have another 20,000 that are currently in the queue to be processed. We will continue to do those. Again, please be patient with the staff working down there. They are doing the very best they can, and we are working round the clock. The deadline still is October 27th, last day to request a mail-in ballot. We would encourage you to please not wait to the last minute. That is only one week before the general election, and that is not a great deal of time to get a ballot processed, get it out in the mail, and get it to you so that it can be received back here in the Elections Office. So those are just a couple of updates. Also to share that the Elections Staff has made tremendous progress. Virtually all of our polling locations have been confirmed. We do have an Election Board meeting right after our Commissioners meeting today, where we'll be discussing a final few polling sites, but 99% of the polling locations have been confirmed, and they will be open. We also have 95% of our Judges of Elections confirmed, only have a few more spots to fill, and we have excess of 700 poll workers already identified. So the county is in very good shape and preparing for those folks who want to vote in person to afford you that opportunity. So it looks like the computer is ready, so I'm going to turn it back over to Kevin to give an update on the Restart Grant Fund.
Sure. How about a round of applause for our technology expert, Rebecca Laird, over here? For okey-dokey, let's just say open. All right. There we go. Everything hangs in the balance of this PowerPoint. All right. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing us an opportunity to report back to you here today. Thank you for all of the continued partnership with the Economic Alliance and our team and all of the team with the County of York. Today reaches another milestone moment in our pathway to recovery of the COVID-19 pandemic, and certainly a significant moment with respect to CARES Act funding and all the work that this county has done up to this point. So again, sort of the disclaimer of shout-outs to the Yoko Strong Recovery Task Force, which had originally really set the roadmap for much of the allocation process and decisions that you have made, and really helped guide our organization in partnership with Community First Fund in shaping how we administered this program and moved it forward. So at the risk of recapping a lot of what I know I've been here in the past and have presented, so I'm going to move a little quick, and we can certainly make available a PDF of this presentation, but just to do a brief recap for everyone's benefit of the program itself and really how we got to the award process. So I sort of wanted to take you on that little bit of a journey, but recall, obviously, the Commissioners were awarded, the County of York was awarded $40.5 million. Among those first allocation decisions made by this Board of Commissioners were to allocate $10 million and $4 million respectively for small businesses and nonprofits through the creation of a grant program with grants being awarded up to $35,000 for eligible small businesses and nonprofits. It was not a first-come, first-served program, but rather based on need and criteria. The program was officially launched in late July, and all of the application assistance was available in English and Spanish. I'll move quickly. This is straight from CARES Act. This is essentially what is an eligible expense under COVID-19 of what these grants could be used for, for nonprofits or small businesses. And this was the tiered structure of the grants. This was all made available to the public via the website, the portal, and the program guidelines. So again, it really ranged on the size of the organization, for-profit or nonprofit. With respect to eligibility, it was eligible for small businesses under $3 million in gross revenue with under 50 full-time equivalent employees, and for restaurants with no cap revenue, just under 75 FTEs. And again, recognizing that there was a likelihood that there would be more requests than there were funds available, this Board of Commissioners had established some prioritization for funding, and that was really to drive resources to those most vulnerable or those who did not receive other public support, be it the PPP program, the IDOL program, the CWCA, or the State Small Business Assistance Grant. Businesses who are most financially, most negatively financially impacted, those located in low to moderate income census tracts in the county, those owned by individuals of low to moderate income, or those owned by individuals federally defined as historically disadvantaged, which essentially equates to majority owned by a person of color. Again, those were merely recommended, those were eligibility guidelines that did not preclude other applicants from applying. Similarly, on nonprofits, it was open to nonprofits under $3 million in revenue and under 75 full-time equivalent employees. And with respect to prioritizing the nonprofit funding, organizations, again, who did not receive other funding, such as the PPP program, or organizations that delivered a core service that was defined in the Recovery Task Force Report as food security, housing stability, rapid reemployment, or childcare. Applicants through the portal process were asked to upload three items, basically, their most recent tax return, a PNL, or their 990 if they're a nonprofit, a government-issued ID, and signed certification attesting to truthfulness of the application information and things of that nature. Because we wanted to approach this differently and try to make as much direct outreach as possible throughout our county, I do think that a difference-maker of our program versus other counties, and we know that other counties have asked to emulate similar tactics that were utilized, was really a conventional marketing approach and then really a direct community outreach approach. I'd like to thank everyone up here for all of their efforts, and a lot of folks in the audience today for helping with that outreach. I know many of our Commissioners assisted in a lot of the business canvassing throughout the county, all done socially distanced with all precaution taken. We did a host of webinars targeting specific strategic stakeholder groups. As you can see, whether it was manufacturers, Spanish-speaking applicants, Hanover-based businesses, or some of those targeted vulnerable industry sectors like personal care industry and nonprofit organizations. With respect to community presentations, Silas and I and several others did the Rotary Road Show throughout York County. We worked with our Hanover Main Street and Hanover Chamber to try to promote this program in the Hanover area, worked with our local NAACP, the Confronting Racism Coalition, to host events, and obviously, we utilized every event that is within our network, that most of which are being done virtually now, but we used any opportunity to promote this program. We also did host a series of office hours, both in our Roosevelt Avenue office and working with our partners throughout the county, be it local governments or legislative offices, to host direct office hours, again, taking all precautions necessary to socially distance. But we believe that this, again, was a difference-maker for individuals to get that one-to-one personal attention, and we know that there is a technology gap for some individuals, be it access to technology or just understanding exactly what they needed to upload, and we were there to open our doors to allow them to utilize our technology to print, to scan, to upload, things of that nature. Those business canvases represented about 35 hours of direct canvassing, where we met with business owners across the county, as you can see, a number of locations. We touched 230 businesses and worked with a host of partners along the way, like CASA, SCORE, Shiloh Baptist, Black Ministers Association, York XL, and again, a host of our elected officials throughout the county. The traditional marketing approach included everything that you might imagine: social media, website advertisement, e-newsletter advertisements, working with our local print and television media, thank you to those who are present who had worked with us to help raise awareness for this program. From a logistical perspective, the application opened on August 28th. It closed on Friday, September 11th, at 11:59. That following week was really spent working through the application pool with some individuals just to ensure all of the documents were uploaded properly or correctly in the right field in the website. We then spent the subsequent weeks really working through the compilation, scoring, eligibility evaluation, and review. And again, throughout this entire process, providing assistance in English and Spanish. So here's the sum total, which we have reported in the past, the sum total of total applications that we had received, 1,044, for a total of $18.7 million in requests. The nonprofit sector applied for just over $2 million, and I'll go into these specific categories in a little bit, and for-profit comprising about $16.7 million of that. And again, you can see from the map, thank you to our Planning Commission for helping us to GIS all of the application locations, but you can see that that outreach strategy worked, and we did receive applications from a significant cross-section of this county and darn near every local government. Not every one, we can't say all 72, but we got pretty darn close. Now, on the nonprofit pool, there were a total of 107 applications from nonprofit organizations totaling just over $2 million in requests. Now, you'll recall that this Board of Commissioners allocated $4 million to the nonprofit support. We believe that this number came in a little bit less than the $4 million because what we hadn't anticipated early on when we worked on the program guidelines was that the County Commissioners would then take action to do direct allocations to a number of nonprofits throughout the community, all very deserving and in need, and that took a significant chunk of dollars out of that universe. So one of the recommendations that we'll make, and we'll summarize this at the end, is that we proceed to award all of the nonprofit applications, all of the eligible nonprofit applications, and then shift the remaining balance of that $4 million to small business support. So again, approximately $2 million. That would equate to an average grant for the nonprofits of about $19,000. On the small business side, we received 937 applications totaling $16.7 million. And some key takeaways of data from the total application pool, key industry sectors that applied, again, this shows that those vulnerable industry sectors and that targeted outreach did bear fruit. Restaurants submitting for the largest segment of applications, 13.5% of applications, or 18% of funding. Remember, the applications ranged in those tiers of awards, so one application is very different than the other. Key demographics, 33% of the application pool from historically disadvantaged businesses, representing 29% of funding, an African-American and Hispanic population comprising the significant chunk of that, 21%, and Asian-American comprising 9%. So a recommendation for award will be 705 applications. So a recommendation for award will be 705 applications for an amount total of just shy of $12 million, 11.95, with an average grant then of about $16,900, call it just shy of $17,000. From a award perspective, I'll give you some key takeaways and data and demographics. We did receive applications from a significant amount of our low to moderate income areas. Again, this was targeted outreach, and this was certainly well beyond the city. You can see, this is really, this is your Main Street community throughout York County. These are our boroughs, these are our small downtowns, this is the city of York. So it was a significant cross-section throughout these areas, as with the priority industries, accounting for about 46% or 48%, 49% of the total fund for those priority areas, and those, again, were retail, restaurants, personal care, hospitality, tourism. And you can see the cross-section of economic impact to these businesses, and I'll summarize these here in a moment. So some summary points, facts and figures from the award list, again, 705 representing about $11.9 million. This equates to 75% of all applications for for-profit businesses. So that's pretty significant, and again, ideally, obviously, we would love to award 100%, but that is stretching those dollars pretty far and having a significant impact. Historically disadvantaged businesses comprising 39% of awards or 36% of the funding, and again, African-American and our Hispanic population making the more, the most significant percent of that at 25%, and Asian-American 11%. Again, our Main Street communities will receive about 51% of the awarded applicants are based in the city or those boroughs, and 47% of funding is designated in those low to moderate income areas. Over 60% of awardees reported revenue loss of over 50%, and again, I think that's a significant statistic, and those vulnerable industry sectors making up nearly half of the pool of funds and applications. And we're still, as I've shared, we're still calculating all of these, pulling all of this data, and just moments ago, we received the statistic that we're at about 49% women-owned business of this list as well, so about 51, 49. So to summarize the recommendations before the commissioners today, we'd recommend authorizing the award of 705 small businesses, small business applications for about $11.9 million. That's 75% of all of the applications submitted for an average grant of just shy of $17,000. 107 nonprofit awards for just over $2 million, 100% of the applications with an average grant of $19,000, and that gives you a sum total of 812 applications, just shy of the $14 million allocated, which again, equates to 78% of all applications, which is a significant amount reached. And again, commendation to the county commissioners for helping to set those criteria in motion for this outreach, so an average grant of just over $17,000. So essentially, those recommendations boil down to this. Recall, we would recommend awarding all of the eligible nonprofits and then shifting that balance, which is about $2 million, to the small business support, and then proceeding to the next step of award for the full list of 812. Now, here's the disclaimer part, and here's the next steps. So assuming if the commissioners wish to proceed today, we will communicate to all of the applicants, those receiving an award recommended for funding and those not, and then that still begins several more key steps. So we will communicate to them that there are several more steps in this process, which include continued underwriting and fraud protection, bank verification, and they will have to execute a grant contract with the County of York. So there are still several steps that applicants and awardees will have to respond to and take action on, so these numbers could shift slightly. We certainly hope they don't, but we know that there are several more steps that could determine ineligibility for an awardee, as we do more of the fraud protection or background check information, or, and we've seen this in other communities and with the state, awardees may opt out for whatever reason, a variety of reasons, they may not wish to sign that contract. So the disclaimer is, we would recommend proceeding with this process of over 800 award lists. We can have our third party transmit that list to county, to Mark and his team, and they can begin that process, but we know that it will slightly shift, and in the case that it does shift, and an applicant takes themselves out of the award category, or for whatever reason is determined ineligible, we would merely go to the next in line on the scoring process. So that's where we will do a final reconciliation when it's all said and done, and when it is all said and done and all contracts signed, we'll have a full tabulation of award names, information that we can then transmit to the county for publishing. And just to sort of summarize also, I think it is important, and I had expressed to the county commissioners, our team was sent into a little bit of a fun tizzy the other day when the state had announced its second round of funding for small business assistance, which is awesome and excellent, but obviously, that impacted all of our applicants as well. So, but just to recap, it gave us the moment to sort of pause and look back over these past several months, not that anyone really wants to, but to look at the support that has been ushered into this community, and it has been significant, and I think it's with the preface that we know there are still individuals and businesses who are in significant need, and we know that in some cases, they've not gotten exactly what they need or something at all, and we hope that we can still reach them. But the City of York, of course, created a program early on with CBPG dollars that allocated about $255,000. Through our efforts with Downtown Inc., we were able to raise through Give Local York and our philanthropic community over $100,000 to assist 34 businesses. Community Foundation in United Way worked with the philanthropic community to raise $445,000 primarily for nonprofits. State government, early on in the pandemic, had created the CWCA program, the Commonwealth Working Capital, the Small Business Assistance Program, the 225 million that was allocated by the state. To date, over $5 million awarded in York County to 286 businesses, and now over 800 applications recommended for funding with $14 million. And the PPP program through the federal government, the best we can discern, and it's still a slightly moving target with PPP, but approximately $285 million in York County to 693 businesses. So with that, I will certainly entertain any questions, or happy to provide any additional information.
Could you just move back to the recommendation screen?
Yes, certainly. There we go.
I just wanted two things. One, you mentioned it earlier that the timeframe has taken a little bit longer, but there were 100 and plus applicants who didn't have all the necessary paperwork in, and the commissioners were very committed to making sure this wasn't first come, first served, and anyone that applied would be eligible. So we know that's delayed the process by five to seven days, but we appreciate the fact that you took the time so that everyone had an opportunity to get their application in. I'd also like to mention for the folks watching that the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania mentioned York County today in one of their daily announcements, the program that we've put together with the Economic Alliance and the Community First Fund. So it's been viewed as the best practice out there in the Commonwealth, which I think is a great testament to the collaboration between the commissioners and Economic Alliance and Community First Fund. So I don't have any further questions.
I have just a few things, three real quick things. One, for full disclosure about the known, about the list of the business people.
Yes, yeah, just to reemphasize that to date, and we have done this as anonymous as possible, and keeping the list anonymous for the benefit of the county commissioners and for the benefit of all, really. So up to this point, any information is using a unique identification number, at whatever point in time that the applicant has affected the contract and executed it, we would transmit their personal information, banking information over to the county to then proceed with funding.
Right. And just to summarize the funding, and the 14 million, the 10 and 4 was pretty close as far as I could see with the applications coming in. Do you have the, I don't know if you had this in your presentation, if I could, the number of, we've fulfilled the nonprofits who were eligible with about $2 million, and we moved $2 million, or we're recommending moving $2 million over to the 10 to go to 12, and we're doing about, I think you said 75% of the businesses that applied
Correct.
will take that $12 million. How much were we oversubscribed about?
Well, it was 18.7 million total for 14 allocated, so 4.7.
About 4.7, okay. And then the only other thing, just for the business owners, you talked about the timeline now for verifying things, and is it two, three weeks?
That's a great question as well. So again, as noted, we'll begin all the communication today, later today, so all applicants will receive an email. Obviously, some will receive the news that they were not funded, and the majority, 78% receiving news that they will be funded, and that there is action necessary on their part. So then we'll begin to communicate with each individual applicant as to whether or not, you know, they have cleared all of the process for underwriting and are ready to go into the application portal, will be asked to download the grant contract, sign it, scan it, upload it. So realistically, it begins today, and our hope is obviously to move as expeditiously as possible. We know that not everyone reads their email immediately, or some need to be chased down. But for the, to answer the question of an applicant, when will I get funded, it really, the burden almost shifts to them at this point as to how soon they can complete their process. And then obviously, we'll work with the county to batch those requests. We don't anticipate it will be a lump sum of, we're not going to wait until all are said and done, and we've worked with the county that we will batch them on a weekly basis, as they're ready to be funded, we'll proceed with that.
And Mark, the checks will go down through the county, right? Yep.
I think, Greg, you had a question.
Yeah, I was just curious, the 25% that didn't get funded, was there a common reason for that, or?
No, honestly, it's just the limitation of funds. Yeah, and again, we had scored them, so, you know, we sort of just worked our way down the list. Yeah, correct.
Any additional questions for Kevin?
Sounds good. Very thorough, well-presented.
Again, thank you all very, very much, we appreciate the partnership, and this is a significant step forward.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the award of all eligible nonprofit applications and the relocation of any remaining balance from the nonprofit grant support pool to the small business grant support fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sounds good.
Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And now make a motion to authorize proceeding to award and fund an award list of approximately 812 applications, representing approximately $14 million for small businesses and for nonprofits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. While we don't know who will be getting an email today, the Board of Commissioners will extend our preliminary congratulations to those recipients, and as Kevin mentioned, the ball is going to be in your court to complete the final information that's needed in order to process your grants. So with that, I think we'll move on to a period of public comment.
I read.
If you could please state your name, your municipality, and please limit your comments to two minutes.
Joan Lenker, and I'm from Lower Allen Township. On behalf of the Friends of Sheaford Road Bridge, I will be brief. I just simply want to say thank you for listening and being flexible, and we will be working with you in the next couple of years to preserve the bridge, and we do have the article in the Penn Live, which was positive for all of us to show that we can work together. So thank you again, and we'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Again, if you could just state your name, where you're from, and if you could, please limit your comments to two minutes.
Good morning, Janice Lynx, Lower Allen Township. 14 months ago, I began the journey to save the Sheaford Road Bridge, soon to be joined by Joan Lenker, and together we formed the group Friends of Sheaford Road Bridge, which has continued to grow in numbers and the areas of expertise of those members. Over a year later, we are thrilled to be in this position, given the opportunity to preserve the Sheaford Road Bridge. We've learned a lot and have much more to learn going forward. I often say we've relied on instinct, Google, and the advice of various preservation groups, having had no experience in preservation prior to this. This lack of experience has required your patience. We truly appreciate this opportunity and believe with the help of the county's preservation groups that have supported us, and the many members of Friends of Sheaford Road Bridge, we will be successful. So this is a milestone for us, and on behalf of our group, I want to say thank you, we know what we'll be doing for the next two years. So we'll be sending you an email about various things coming up, but I won't take up more of your time now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we will move on to Salary Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or as set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and rail officers with no additional benefits or concessions as otherwise noted, as stated in the Internal Salary Board detail, Department 17 Information Services, Department 70 E911, and Department 79 Area Agency on Aging and Rail Offices, Department 52 Coroner, Department 59 Criminal Response Unit.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, she carries.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. For folks watching, we are going to pause for roughly five minutes while we let folks exit the room who'd like to exit. We have some election folks that are going to be coming in, so just bear with us, we're going to take a five-minute video and audio pause, and then we will be back. Thank you. All right, welcome back, for those that are still out there watching. I will call the Board of Elections meeting to order for October 7th, 2020.
Good morning, Steve Ulrich, Director of Elections and Voter Registrations for York County. I bring before the board three, two motions for the permanent and the temporary relocation of three polling places within York County.
Okay.
Okay. Should we get you some water?
The motion is to approve the permanent relocation of the following polling places pursuant to Pennsylvania State Code 252726 for November 3rd, relocating the polling place in Franklintown Borough from the Northern York County Fire Rescue Franklintown Station to the Franklintown United Brethren and Church, Christ Church on 10 North Baltimore Street in Franklintown. To also move permanently the polling place in York 4th Ward, 1st Precinct, from Temple Beth Israel at 2090 Hollywood Drive to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, 2100 Hollywood Drive in York.
I believe that should be York Township, Steve, correct?
That is the official.
York Township, 4th Ward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the permanent relocation of the following polling places pursuant to 25 PS 2726 for the November 3rd, 2020 general election, as Steve reported.
Second.
A motion and a second. We just want to pause here to see if there's any public comment. Hearing none, I will ask for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Would also like to bring before the board a motion to approve the temporary relocation of the Spring Garden District 4 polling place from the Gruenbacher Center at York College of Pennsylvania to the York College Kingsmill Road Depot at 410 Kingsmill Road in York.
I will make a motion to conditionally approve the temporary relocation of the following polling place pursuant to 25 PS 2726 for the November 3rd, 2020 general election, pending final negotiations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Before I call for a vote, just open it up for any public comment. For those of you that are watching, the normal location for Spring Garden 4 is the Gruenbacher Center, and that is unavailable to be open for the election. So we are working with York College to find an alternate location, and this one is potentially will be that location. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. For folks watching, so as of approval of these two motions by the Board of Elections, 99% of our polling locations are now confirmed. There is really only one remaining, and that is in Springfield. There is really only one remaining, and that is in Springfield 6. And we've got lots of people out there helping and working with us to identify a polling location for Springfield 6. So to assure the public, for those who want to vote in person, we are confident that 161 of our polling locations will be open on Election Day. So with that, I think we move on to.
Also would like, also like to bring before the board a swearing-in of staff that works in the Elections Office for the general election.
I think we turn it over to Mr. Dur.
You can stand up. And then, aye, if you state your name. If you can repeat after me, I'm sorry. Does everybody have a sheet that you can follow along? Aye, state your name. Being duly affirmed hereby, declare that I will, as clerk to the Board of Elections of York County, perform my duties impartially to include the processing of mail-in ballots, absentee ballots, provisional ballots, and late military ballots, and that I will not read, write, count, or certify any returned vote or document falsely or fraudulently.
Thank you all for your willingness to serve.
Would also like to bring before the board a policy and procedures document for election watchers and authorized representatives' policies, which was distributed to the board earlier today.
I make a motion to approve of election watcher and authorized representative policy for York County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If this motion is approved, we will have the document posted on our website so that that's accessible for everyone. This is just another measure that the Board of Commissioners, I should say, the Election Board, is putting in place to ensure we have a safe, secure election. What we have in front of us, there are a list of 18 items on the policy. Again, they will be posted on the website, and the Elections Board will certainly update those items as needed. That'll certainly be done at another Elections Board meeting, should we see the need to do that. So with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Other business?
There's no other business that comes forth from the Elections Office at this time.
At this juncture, I would say that we will tentatively have another Election Board meeting on October 21st, which is after the next commissioners' meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. For those of you that stuck with us, thank you for sticking with us, and have a great day.